Commissioners' regular meeting for Wednesday, April 7, 2021 to order. Clerk, can we have a roll call?
We have 11 present and one absent.
11 present, one absent. Please note that Commissioner Fisher is excused from tonight's meeting. Next, we'd like to move to the prayer and the pledge. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Almighty God, we implore you. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. As we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bowl, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
I am the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, as we retain in justice for all.
Moving on to the next item, approval of minutes. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time, I move to approve the minutes that occurred on the March 16, 2021, regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second hearing on the question. Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote?
We haven't quite done it yet, so.
Okay.
Here we go.
There we go.
Here we go.
Anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
We have 11 ye, 0 na.
11 ye, 0 na. Next item on the agenda is items not addressed on the agenda. Seeing that we have none, we'll move on to the chief executive's report. So lots of things happening locally and kind of exciting times in Butte Silver Bowl. First off is today we do a proclamation for the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So please, if you have one of the blue pinwheels, put it out. It's in recognition of identifying that we still have issues within our community and, you know, working in the educational profession for many years. You know, the foresees in that proclamation today is really just a reminder that we do still have issues within our community. As many of you know, and I didn't mean for it to be a surprise to everyone here, that it is my intent to bring to you that we issue a license refund to all of our businesses. And I've been working with Danette and Director Gleason, I should say, on how we can really work with this. And it's using some of our COVID relief funds to be able to backfill with things that we've paid out of the general fund that were associated with COVID so that we can actually do that. And it gives some relief to our businesses. And I know that we toiled with that a lot on, is it fair to just give the bars and casinos that license refund? But so we looked at it and we feel that it's fair for everyone to do that. And we can do that with the funds that are available through the COVID relief and not put us in any kind of tax situation where we pass that on to the taxpayers in Butte. So we feel very strong about doing that. I think it's a good way to get back to our community. And so that is going to be my recommendation. I'll bring it back, I'll bring it to the next regular council meeting two weeks from today. The concentric allocation agreement, I've asked Commissioner Sorge to be part of our community, representing the commissioners to represent us on that. There's been some talk about how the allocation agreement goes with concentricity. And it really, there hasn't been a lot of talks about what we're doing with that recently. And so the concentric was signed, but there are some moving parts on that and how the funding and what those pieces are going to look like. And so here will be the representation for the commissioners here. Eric Castle, Julia Crane, and we will represent as well in those negotiations. And so I think there was some confusion of, you know, the gag order and things. This is not close to the public, but we're not going to have open forum meetings when we do these negotiations. It's not like we're going to open up the civic center and talk about the allocation. We're going to have representation and then we're going to report back to this body and talk about what those are going to be so that everybody is informed and the public is informed as well. As you saw today, and Mike Smith did a fantastic job of kind of putting that in the paper today about the vaccination campaign that we're doing. We're planning on going out and really encouraging people to get out and get vaccinated. And I think it's important for us as a government party to encourage that. It's safe, it's the most effective thing and the best thing that we can do in our community to get past this pandemic. Because although we've opened it up and the restrictions have, you know, really lightened up and our numbers are fantastic right now, it's still a real thing. COVID has not left our community. And so the best thing that we can do for our community is go out and get vaccinated. And I know that most people in here have done that. And I know a couple of our commissioners have felt the effects of that. And tomorrow, I may feel that myself on my second dose. But just to give you a couple of the numbers is that we're at eight cases per 100,000. You know, the metric was 25. That's probably about the lowest we've been and about 3% positivity rate. So even as we lifted the mask mandate and stuff, our numbers have continued to go down. So I feel very confident, but we don't want to relax too much. And we still encourage people, as we are doing here tonight, to continue to wear the masks in public. So that's fantastic, what our community is doing, and I'm very proud of that. Then we go to our upper funding. I'm tasked with our department heads to have projects ready and available because, you know, there's a lot of money that's coming through the governments, through the American Rescue Plan. And we want to make sure that we are ready and have our projects available so that we're in line when those funds are given out. We're going to get allocations within our community, but there's also matching funds and there's different things. And we want to leverage the funding that we're going to get the best that we possibly can. So we've got, the department heads are, you know, we have such a fantastic staff in Butte Silver Bowl. And I've tasked them with, you know, having their projects ready so that when and if and how that comes forward to us, that we're ready to access that. So, you know, we're in unprecedented times and we're tasked with a tall order, but we're going to be able to do some great things with the funding that's coming forward. And we want to make sure that we're doing what's highest and best for our community. And so we will prioritize that. I'm going to ask this body, I'll probably ask a few members to be part of that when we start selecting whether the highest and best priority projects that we have coming forward. So we'll put that together and so more to come on that. So with that, I think we'll move forward and just get this our first in-person meeting for my tenure in Butte Silver Bowl. And it's nice to be back and seeing everybody in person. And, you know, I've got to congratulate our IT staff for the tasks that they took on in allowing us to continue to have our council meetings and being able to respond to the public and things. And I think that Cindy's reading skills have become extremely proficient over this time. And so I should say Commissioner Shaw, sorry about that. But it's been, you know, everyone's been, it's been a tough time, but I've got to thank our IT staff and everybody that we've got through that. And it's nice to be back in person and hopefully we can continue to be there. So, all right. So we will move on to any comments on any items on the agenda tonight. Clerk, do we have any? Call-ins? We have a call-in coming in? Okay.
Welcome to the Butte Silver Bowl Commissioners' Meeting. Please state your name and address and make your comment.
Good evening, other one. Philip Marto. Address is 818 Mountain Street. And I'm calling in reference to approval 2020-472. And I'm calling in lieu of Carol Gregg, who is on that approval. She had to work tonight and she cannot get to the telephone. So I'm making me an appeal. Shall I just go ahead?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. What I'm calling about is we would like to have the cost of, as stated in the approval, the cost of the land purchase, which is approximately $22.50, taken away in lieu of the cost of our survey, which is going to currently cost us $5,250. And the reason we're asking that is because two and a half years ago, in July of 2019, we received a letter or an email from Barry Skolkrund in the community development. And she had made that offer in that email. And also, we had received that verbally two and a half years ago when we started this process. We were just recently approved, I think you folks approved us just maybe January or February this past, this year. And so we're grateful for that. But we're not sure why the offer has been rescinded. We've been in communication with some people in the county who've given us some reasons, but we still don't quite understand the reasoning for that. We initially started out with a survey cost of $39.50. And then our surveyor found out that the points that we needed to survey for the city and county are now up to 16 points, which blew the cost of our survey up. We just want to purchase a half an acre. That's all we've ever wanted to purchase to build a garage on. Two and a half years ago, we went to Dory and asked her if we bought this house, would the county be willing to sell us some property, a half an acre for a garage? And she checked around with various departments and came back and said, yeah, yeah, that's very good. And we can do that. So we went ahead and bought the property based on that good news. And so now we own the property and we'd like to purchase this half acre. The letter that we got from Dory, we sent a packet out to each commissioner and several other employees with the county over a month ago. And we were told that they did not get that. But we sent a letter of appeal and a packet that included this email from Barry Skolkrund and the proposal from the county, which states, as Carol and I discussed, I'm, Carol is my fiancee, and as Carol and I discussed, I'm working with the planning department on the requirements for the survey. As this survey will not only benefit your property, it will also cure some issues related to undedicated streets in your neighborhood. That being said, the local government has accepted and credited the expense of survey work towards the purchase price cost savings to you. So we're also agreeing with that, that we're going to be improving the property and putting a garage on it, which will increase the tax base for the county. And we're, at the same time, we're getting those undedicated points figured out for you folks as well. So the initial proposal was, we were surprised to get it, but we felt that was generous and that was right. And we still feel that it is right and that it is not right to just pull that away now and change the agreement. So we're not sure why that is, and we'd ask you folks to take a look at that and see if you can rectify that issue.
Any other comment?
All I want to say is we're not rich people moving in from somewhere else. I used to live in Butte and I hope to retire there. I'm 64 years young and we're good citizens. We're both working class people. We don't have a lot of money, so we're trying to save every little bit we can. So we'd sure appreciate it if you folks would take a look at that and see if you can help us out with that.
Thank you, Mr. Greg.
Thank you very much.
Any other comment on anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to any written comments. Clerk, do we have any written comments in?
No, not on the agenda.
All right. Moving on to bid openings. So we have two bid openings tonight. We'll start with communication number 2020-126. Chris Rosso, Tiffed Administration requesting council commissioners authorization to schedule a bid opening for April 7, 2021, for the Port of Montana Connection Rail Expansion project. And so do we have? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication for both bid openings and both appear to be in order.
All right. That's Rosso. Bed opens.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioners, we have five bids for the rail project. The first one is from Rail Services out of Inglewood, Colorado.
That's probably just a bid bond to be in here. And hopefully easy enough to find.
We're just doing it on one sheet, right?
Yep. Just the final total after. Crap, yep.
This one?
With this one, we have everything.
Do we have the bond?
The worst part about opening bids is finding the bid bond.
I think they do this on purpose.
This is all our resumes and our time schedule, but it's not the bid bond. It's supposed to be in here. This is? This is the form they included in the bid. Right here.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total bid is $8,631,104.45. Eight million, six thirty-one, one oh four, forty-five.
Eight million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and four, and how many cents?
Forty-five cents.
Forty-five cents. Thank you.
Chief Executive Gallagher, this one is from Earthworks Solutions, Gillette, Wyoming.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total is $7,337,916.72. Seven million, three thirty-seven, nine sixteen, seventy-two.
Seven million, three hundred and thirty-seven, nine hundred and sixteen, and seventy-two cents.
Yep.
Thank you, Director Neary.
This bid is from Montana Civil Contractors out of Belgrade.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total on this is $8,084,021.55. Eight million, eighty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Eight million, eighty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents?
Yep.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Chief Executive Gallagher, this bid is from SEMA Construction, Centennial, Colorado.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total is $8,936,740.53. Eight million, nine thirty-six, seven forty, fifty-three.
Eight million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty, and fifty-three cents. Thank you, Director Neary.
Chief Executive Gallagher, this is from Rail Works Track Systems.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Chalice, Washington.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total is $8,393,486 even. Eight million, three ninety-three, four eighty-six.
Eight million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yep.
Thank you, Director Neary. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. First of all, Director Neary, could you give us an estimate? If we had an engineer's estimate for that? I know you knew we were going to ask for it.
Commissioner Shaw, council members, the engineer's estimate was 11.6 million, but I would caveat that the estimate was done and we did do some minor revisions to the amount of track that we were actually building and didn't update the estimate, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would move to refer the bid bids back to to the Tiffed Administrator and wait for their recommendation back to this council.
Second. We have a motion and a second to refer back to the administration. Anything on the question? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Ms. Rose, approximately how many miles of tracks is this? If, I'm just kind of curious of what.
I believe, Commissioner Sorge, it's about three miles of track, but it's not, it's five track spurs that run parallel to each other. We are also in partnership with the Port of Montana. They are also building some additional track spurs and transloading tracks. So it's not, we're not going three miles. We'll be building quite a bit of track that's parallel to each other, along with an industrial need and some additional spurs.
Thank you.
Any other questions of commissioners? Seeing none, could commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote?
11 ye and 0 na.
11 ye, 0 na. Motion passes. Moving on to the second communication number 2020-126, bid opening. Chris Rosso, Tiffed Administration requesting council commissioners authorized to schedule a bid opening for April 7, 2021, for the Sugarloaf Loop construction project in Montana Connections. County Attorney, is a proof of publication.
Mr. Chief Executive, yes, there was, and it was in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. And then, Ms. Rosa. It looks like Mr. Neary's going to be helping again.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the... this bid is... there was three bids. This bid is from Hoffman's R&amp;M Services in Butte.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Oh, yeah, this one is what we want.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total on this project is two million, six hundred thousand even.
Two million, six hundred thousand.
Yep.
Do we already say what it's from? Mungus?
Chief Executive Gallagher, this one is from Mungus and Company Incorporated from Anaconda.
Thank you, Director Neary.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total is one million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. One million, eight fifty-four, three thirty-eight, eighty-two.
One million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Thank you, Director Neary.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the final bid is from RS Johnson Construction in Anaconda.
Thank you, Director Neary.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total on this is two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Two million, one seventy-two, seven eighty-seven, thirty.
Two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Thank you, Director Neary. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I make a motion to refer these bids, these three bids, back to the Tepid Administrator for their recommendation back to the council.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to refer back to the Tepid Administration. Anything on the question? Commissioner Callahan.
I was just curious of what the estimate was.
Commissioner Callahan, the engineer's estimate for this one was 2.3 million.
Thank you.
Engineer's estimate was two million, three hundred thousand dollars. Anything else on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Would you like to change the vote? And clerk, could you please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to... Moving on to the consent agenda. Section A, 1 through 4, and Section B, 1 through 28. Do we have any friendly amendments or segregations? Commissioner Mankins.
I would like to segregate number 23, Communication Number 2021-166.
Communication 23, 2021, dash 166. Any other segregations? Seeing none. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the consent agenda, A, 1 through 4, and B, 1 through 28, with the exception of item 23 in the... in B. It's 2021-166.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Would you like to change the vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay. Moving back to Communication Number 23, Commissioner Man... I should say Communication Number 2021, dash 166, Commissioner Mankins. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. Carol Grigg, 818 Mountain Street, B. Montana, requesting council commissioners permission for a survey expense to be credited towards the purchase price of the property located at 818 Mountain Street. This is pertaining to a building and garage adjacent to our home. Commissioner Mankins.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. At this time, I know that Phil Bardot called in and made a comment and kind of refreshed us. He sent a packet, but I would like to hear from Planning Director Casey that is in the audience right now to kind of explain the cost and the unexpected costs that Carol and Phil feel that they are paying for with the survey that is being conducted to purchase this land. So, at this time, I was wondering if Director Casey could speak on that?
Thank you, Director Mankins. Director... Commissioner Mankins. Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, for the record, I am Lori Casey, Director of Planning. To answer Mr. Mankins' question, I don't believe this is an unexpected cost. In June of 2019, Mrs. Griggs and Mr. Bardot put a communication into this body to purchase their land. Subsequently, in September, the Land Sales Committee, through the Land Sales Director, Mr. Riordan, Pat Riordan, his recommendation, based on the Land Sales Committee, was to deny that communication. Subsequently, there were several reasons for that denial. This piece of land is part of a 130-acre tract. It's a tract of record that we received from Arco, and it's not uncommon, when we receive this land, that it is encumbered by our roads and a lot of areas such as this, at 130 acres. The surveying and subdivision laws and certificate of surveys require that when you survey a property, you have to also survey the remainder piece. So, the planning department worked with Ms. Skogrid, Mr. Riordan, to try and find a reasonable area that would be acceptable under the laws of surveying to survey to. So, during the course of the year and a half approximately, Mr. Riordan worked with various departments, the planning department, with the Bardos. In August of 2020, he sent a map to them that showed the extent of the survey. So, basically, what we used, although Buffalo Street and even that portion of Main Street are encumbered into this 130 acres, so there were never dedicated roads to Beattie Silverbow. Basically, we've used them, maintained them, so they're kind of more of a prescriptive use easement, but we can use those because they... we've treated them like our roads, so we could go to the boundaries of those roads to narrow his... the scope of the survey that they needed. So, in August, Mr. Riordan sent a map to Mr. Bardot and said, "This is what your extent of survey would be." So, it would survey out the piece that the Bardos are requesting, and then it has to survey the remainder piece that would be left in Butte Silverbow's name. In October of 2020, Mr. Riordan sent an email to Mr. Bardot stating that, to the extent that his request is approved, it would follow council policy. That's the policy, adjacent landowner policy, that this body adopted. And one of those requirements is that the applicant is required... is responsible for the surveying cost as well as the cost of the land. So, he informed Mr. Bardot of that, and so, as you know, Mr. Riordan passed away unexpectedly. The Land Sales Committee reviewed this. I sent a recommendation in January to this body, based on the Land Sales Committee's recommendation to approve it. That letter outlined the same conditions that are outlined in the adjacent landowner policy. So, we have followed the policy requirements that were set forth and adopted. At the time that the... this body adopted those policies, one of the reasons that surveying expenses were incorporated is because we knew we had land that was like this, that is, large pieces that need to be surveyed out because they are encumbered.
Thank you, Director Casey. Anything else on the question? Commissioner Mankins.
So, then, a follow-up to that. So, do we have the buy-sell agreement? And how much that was? What they purchased the land for?
Thank you, Commissioner Mankins. Director Casey?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins, we don't have a buy-sell. One of the requirements is they have to survey the property, because the survey will define exactly how much property they will be getting. It's approximately 2,396 square feet, but again, that's approximate until the survey is done. So, their next course of action, after this body had approved the recommendation of the Land Sales Committee, is to get the survey. Then subsequently, a resolution would be passed to then give them the... then to go forward with the land sale.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow-up, Commissioner Mankins.
So, just clarifying, so the $900 they already paid for the survey from Pioneer that is stated in here from Dave Wilson, is that not the survey that needed to be done?
Commissioner Mankins, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins, no, that was a preliminary survey that Ms. Griggs and Mr. Bardot hired Pioneer Technical to do. One of the reasons for denial was they didn't have a plan when they submitted a request, and so, they enlisted Pioneer Technical to help with that plan and detail the land that they would like to obtain from Butte Silverbow. So, that was a preliminary survey only.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions?
Oh, okay, I think we... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Commissioner Riordan.
You said this property came from Arco, correct? Or one of the mining companies? This is part of the acreage surrounding their home and the parcel that they want? Is that true? Is that the way I understand it?
Commissioner Riordan, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Riordan, yes, I believe it came from Arco. If it wasn't Arco, it was one of the mining companies, and yes, it was a large parcel we received, and so, the property surrounding their area and as well as another neighbor's house is owned by Butte Silverbow. Each house owns their individual land.
Okay, I got one more for you, Ms. Casey. Is the fact then that when this property was transferred, it seemed to me that there would have to be a survey already carried out in this property transfer process? Is that true?
Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Mr. Riordan, no. When we accepted in the allocation agreement, I think the 2006 allocation agreement, we accepted the land from Arco, basically kind of as a lump sum, the way they just deeded their mining claims and parcels altogether, so there was no surveying done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Casey. Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Lori, Ms. Casey, I know other property owners in that neighborhood have run into the same issue in the past. Now that this property is surveyed, will other property owners have to do the same thing if they try to purchase a piece, or is this eliminating that part of the...
Commissioner Callahan, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Callahan, no, this does not really cure that. It is a survey specifically associated with the Bardos' property. There's still almost 130 acres that have to be surveyed out. We recognize that as a local government and the expense. We're also trying to come up with ways to help and do maybe some of that surveying, but it... but these large parcels need to be looked at on a global perspective. It's really hard to just parcel out one at a time. That's not good development practice. So, we need to take a look and do... look at these properties to at least get them into an acceptable piece of land that a developer could use, and we're making progress towards that. That is one thing, when we get a land records director, they'll be working on... we're also working on that with our Superfund folks, as we will be receiving more land from Arco, and trying to get something straightened out so that we're not in this situation again.
Director Casey, thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Director Casey, so question on the .55 acres that they were looking to buy, who chose that? Did they choose that, or how? Obviously, it's adjacent to their house, so where does that come from?
Thanks, Commissioner O'Neill. Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neill, I'm not sure where the .55 is coming from. That might be the total area that needs to be surveyed. They wanted enough... they were requesting enough land to build their garage. So, that might be the entire area that needs to be surveyed that we have broke out.
Thanks, Director Casey. Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you. So, follow-up on that, the first $900 survey that they got, that was... I guess, would that be on their own versus... so, the $900 surveys, the pins around it to show the area. Am I correct there? And then, the expensive survey is for their... for the garage. Is it... am I right there? Help me out here.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Neill. Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neill, I am not sure what the $900 is. That was a preliminary to get them some design work to submit for review. The survey itself, the $5,000-plus cost, would be to actually go out and survey the property and put the pins in and create a certificate of survey.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive. So, with that being said, they could have chosen other firms to survey their property. They... did they pick Pioneer, or did we pick Pioneer?
Commissioner O'Neill, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neill, the applicant is responsible to choose the surveyor.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Neill. Director Casey. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, I'm just going to read out of the letter a little bit. You know, it says, "As Carol and I discussed, I'm working with the planning department." This is from Dory Skogrid, and it said, you know, the part of the email said, "That being said, the local government has accepted accredited. The expensive survey worked towards a purchase price cost savings due." And it says, "It should be a benefit to the Butte Silverbow County." What does she mean? Any idea what she would mean by that?
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you.
Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, I can only speak to the part really about the survey, and working with the planning department was trying to look at the extent that we could help save them within... with that remainder survey and what we could do so that we were not having them survey the remainder of 130 acres.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions? Commissioner Mankins.
So, a follow-up on that. So, what is the cost to Phil and Carol, the total cost, for 2,396 square feet?
Commissioner Mankins, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins, one second. The cost, because the actual square footage of land is not known, but based on 2,396 square feet, the cost would be approximately $2,400 to purchase the land. That's based on the Department of Revenue's price. And Commissioner O'Neal, I have to apologize. I thought you were saying .5 acres. I see now in this email, the 2,396 square feet is .05. So that's where, they equate to the one and the same.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow up, Commissioner Manquins?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So then, a follow-up to this. So they're going to pay $5,250 for the survey?
Mr. Chief Executive Commissioner Manquins, I believe that's what they had supplied to you as a quote from Pioneer Technical.
Thanks, Director Casey. Follow up, Commissioner O'Neal?
So, $7,650 for 2,396 square feet to help Butte Silver Bow increase tax base to build a garage, plus move here to continue to help our tax base, provide Butte Silver Bow with additional requirements with streets, surveying streets, making sure that we're cleaning up our street boundaries? Doesn't that seem like a lot of money to continually pay that much for 2,000 and, what was it? 2,396 square feet?
Commissioner Manquins, is that a question to Director Casey? Director Casey?
Mr. Chief Executive Commissioner Manquins, just a clarification, it's not cleaning up our streets. We're using the street as a boundary extent which can be used in the surveying, so they're not surveying out the roads. Buffalo Street, Main Street are still going to be a part of the rest of that acreage. As I explained to Ms. Griggs and Mr. Barto, we were following this body's adjacent landowner policy. Therefore, this body has, they have to ask this body to waive the authority. The planning department, Ms. Schukerod, or the land sales committee doesn't have the authority to waive that requirement. It has to be done through this body.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow up, Commissioner O'Neal first. We'll go to Commissioner Manquins.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I guess, is looking at that .055 acres, whatever, considerably a small lot to build a garage on, I guess, in this market. I just want to note that $7,500 to purchase that if you're in that is probably a good deal, whatever that means at this date and time. But I just want to reference that.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neal. All right, Commissioner Manquins?
Thank you again, Chief Executive. And I know that Director Casey in planning does a very excellent job in her job, but according to someone who does surveying from Pioneer Technical Services, Dave Wilson, that we are essentially creating a track for Butte Silver Bow from Buffalo Street South and realigning your boundaries with the track. So that's from an expert. I understand that Ms. Casey is an expert in her field, but in this field of surveying it, then don't we believe what the expert is saying? That this is helping Butte Silver Bow? I don't see why this family should have to have that burden on them.
Thank you, Commissioner Manquins. Any other comments? Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher, for Director Casey. Can you please, so what I understand is that Mr. Barto and Ms. Griggs have paid $900 for the preliminary survey, correct?
Commissioner Shea, Director Casey?
Mr. Chief Executive Commissioner Shea, I believe so. That's what their letter said.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Casey.
Follow up. Thank you. That's what I understand too. I actually do have a point. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sense of this whole thing because there's so many documents up here that, and Mr. Barto, when he spoke, he asked for an amount of $2,250 to be credited rather than the original 900. Did everybody else understand that as well? And so, my question is, is could you please break down for us? They are the parties responsible for this price of the survey, no matter what, as part of the adjacent landowner agreement. That I understand. If the land purchase price is $2,400, they have already paid $900 for preliminary survey. Am my understanding correct that that was originally asked to be credited and now they're asking for a different amount to be credited? Towards the land purchase, though, it has nothing to do with the survey?
Thanks, Commissioner Shea. Director Casey?
Mr. Chief Executive Commissioner Shea, I'm not sure I can answer that. They're asking for the credit of the survey. I don't believe the $900 is technically a survey.
Okay.
That's about the best I could answer that.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions? Commissioner Manquins, would you like to make a motion?
I guess, one more comment. I'll be quiet. I mean, I guess really, as we're thinking about this in trueness, if they're in this 7,500 bucks, and it is following the correct procedures if they buy it, I mean, I mean, regardless of not, for, yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still a good deal for the homeowner. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Manquins.
So then, at this time, I would, I guess with the directive of Director Casey's expertise that they are following the procedure to the T, and that is how it's been stated, that I make a motion that we place communication number 2021-166, concur and place on file.
We have a motion in a second to concur and place on file. Anyone on the question? Could Commissioners, please vote? And Clerk, could you please record the vote?
Eight yea and three nay.
Eight yea, three nay. Motion passes. Moving on to Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions for, I take it back, skipping a section. Section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions Referred to Judiciary. We have three resolutions. Commissioner O'Neal?
It's too late for me. I voted wrong last time. Am I too late? Is it too far gone or can I re-vote?
I think we can change the vote. Commissioner O'Neal would like to change his vote on the last motion? And would you like to change it to?
I'd like to change it from a.
From a.
From a.
From a to a yea.
I flunked.
Nine a, two nay.
Nine a, two nay. Motion still passes.
Only this one time.
All right. So, moving on to Section 3 again, Ordinances and Resolutions for Judiciary. Please note Council Bill Number 2021-04, Ordinance Number 2021-04, Resolution Number 2021-12, and Resolution Number 2021-13, please note, for Judiciary. Moving on to Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions for Second Reading. We have Council Bill Number 2021-02, Ordinance Number 2021-02. Clerk, could you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 2021-02, Ordinance Number 2021-02. An ordinance amending Chapter 216 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code entitled Fire Department, specifically amending Sections 216030, 216060, 216320, 216321, 216327, 216360, 216380, 216390, 216391, 216420.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill Number 2021-02, Ordinance Number 2021-02, on second reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion in a second to place on file. Anyone on the question?
Move to a second.
I move to a second reading. Anyone on the question? Commissioners, please vote, I should say. And would anyone like to change their vote? And Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Moving on to Council Bill Number 2021-03, Ordinance Number 2021-03. Clerk, could you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 2021-03, Ordinance Number 2021-03. An ordinance amending Section 17060030 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, which section adopted the zoning map of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning approximately 18.5 acres from R1S, one-family suburban residence to C2, community commercial, formerly located east of Harrison Avenue and north of Five Mile Road, located in the McQueenie subdivision, Section 5, Township 2 North, Range 7 West, of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill Number 2021-03, Ordinance Number 2021-03, on second reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion in a second to place on second reading. Anyone on the question? Could Commissioners, please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea and zero nay.
Eleven yea and zero nay. Moving on to Section 5, Ordinances and Resolutions, Suspension of Rules, Final Passage. We have Resolution Number 2021-14, Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution 2021-14 by waiving subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Anyone on the question? Could Commissioners, please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea and zero nay.
Okay. Now we'll move to Resolution Number 2021-14. Clerk, could you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2021-14. A resolution granting conditional approval of the Montana Connection subdivision of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution 2021-14 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion in a second to place on final reading. Anyone on the question? Commissioners, please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea and zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to any public comment on public matter not on the agenda. Clerk, do we have?
We have some letters to read.
All right. Could you please read the letters? Commissioner Shea is very happy that she is not in that seat.
You're lucky. Sorry. The first one is from Dr. John Ray of 915 West Galena Street, Butte, Montana. Butte's response to the threat of COVID-19 pandemic has been remarkable. Just look at the effort to get local citizens vaccinated. It has been a true partnership between government, healthcare professions, and volunteers. Citizens can also take particular pride in our local government, council commissioners, health department, and board of health, all of whom have done so long stayed the course to defeating the dread disease. I also know that the perpetuation, insults, and personal attacks you have had to endure. I know you take seriously your public duties. But these efforts have produced success. We are close to turning the corner on the disease. A year of deprivation, sacrifice, and action has borne fruit. People are asking, though, have we relaxed our public health protection activities to soon? Have we quit in the third quarter? Have we stopped before the final victory? I have no hidden critical agenda for following. It is just sent in a sincere desire to understand the reasoning and information upon which decision to remove the safety mandates in Butte was made. Second letter is from Dr. John Ray, 915 West Galena Street, Butte, Montana. Rarely do public policy questions, even those involving public health policy, admit a universally accepted solution devoid of controversy. Public policy decisions are controversial because they lack certainty. In a democracy, decision-makers must balance and aggregate competing interests in the public policy. Although scientifically-based public health decisions nevertheless still must garner public understanding and support. The democratic belief is that the best public policy, including public health, policy is created through public debate, discourse, and discourse, which means that public must have full information about the issues. This brings to Butte local government's recent decision to remove restrictions such as mandatory mask-wearing. What are some of the issues that the public should consider in debating this course of actions wisdom? What was the data and rationale behind the decision? Arguments for removing restrictions. Number 1, COVID-19 infection statistics are moving in the right direction. Number 2, a significant number of Butte residents have been vaccinated. Number 3, Butte's economy is in critical condition. Number 4, reliance should be placed on personal responsibility. Number 5, restrictions can be reimposed if the COVID-19 statistics start going up. Number 6, people are born wary living such restricted lives. Number 7, restrictions impinge upon our freedoms. While I have the highest respect for the Butte Board of Health and the Health Department who have done outstanding work on behalf of protecting the public in the interest of robust public discussion, I ask that we consider the counterarguments. Number 1, improving statistics are not casual but simply reflect reality. If the reality changes, so do the statistics. If we fail to stay the course, infection rates could increase quickly. Number 2, while a significant number have been vaccinated, a large number have not. We do not know how long protection lasts. New variants emerge almost daily. Every public health source such as the CDC, World Health Organization, NIH warn that even with the vaccine, the public still needs to wear masks, socially distance, and restrict interaction. Number 3, economic recovery demands defeating this pandemic. We do not want to be in a situation of being forced to reimpose Reaganian restrictions because of the disease spikes. Number 4, public policy that relies on what people ought to do instead of what people actually do is doomed to fail. With this disease, it only takes a few to infect the many. Number 5, will we have political, will we have the political will to reimpose mandates if rates and numbers of those infected increase? Given the fatigue vocally, probably not. If not, we could be, we could be back where we were months ago. Number 6, while all of us are weary and want to return to some. of us are weary and want to return to some semblance of the normal, we will be more weary if this disease roars back. While people have freedom, number seven, while people have freedom, all freedoms are limited to the public good. When the private actions of some can harm the many, government has an obligation to step in and regulate this antisocial behavior. Number eight, while done in part to ease the burden on business, the relaxing of mask mandates will place a greater burden on businesses. What is a business to do, have their own mask mandate, and risk alienating the people who don't want to wear masks, do not have a mask mandate, and risk alienating those who support mandatory mask wearing? There will be no uniformity, no predictability. Will heated arguments break out between mask wearers and the maskless? Will workers who have a pre-existing condition and work for a business that abandons mask wearing be compelled to jeopardize their health or lose their job? Number nine, mask wearing is the least one risk public safety measure, but one of the most effective. Why drop it? Number 10, was science the decision driver or politics? While I have the highest regard for the Health Department, I would hope these questions are addressed. The more decisional transparency, the better. Given the apparent haste with which all health restrictions were suddenly removed in Butte, it would be good to know the reasoning and the information that are made. The next letter is also submitted by Dr. John Ray, 915 West Galena. The good and the safety of the people must be supreme in highest law. What happened? If a child who one day was enthusiastic about going to school suddenly does not want to go to school, a discerning parent would ask why. What happened that makes that child want to stay home? If upon retiring at night, a person feels well and wakes up with acute pain, that person would ask why. What happened? Usually, the situation isn't good. In the case of the child, was there a bully? Was there abuse? If you're suddenly sick, did I have a stroke or acute attack? We have similar public health situation in Butte. One day, we are in a measured, planned, steady pace to fully reopen. We are staying the course to defeat COVID-19 until victory is permanently won. Suddenly, almost overnight, poof, all the public health restrictions pertaining to COVID-19 are gone and we're suddenly fully reopened. What happened? What caused this almost overnight change? Why did we abandon all these protective measures when every reputable public health authority in the country says it is important? My God. Every reputable authority says, "Don't fully reopen too soon. Keep mask mandates." What overnight scientific development changed or planned and delivered path to reopening? What crisis caused this change in public health policy? Why? 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 Or did it have nothing to do with science? Was it political? Was it pressure applied? I don't know. Citizens don't know. But I have a right to know. Citizens have a right to know. This affects our health. This affects the economic well-being of our community. This is a government transparency issue. This is a public issue. We need to know what our government is doing and, most importantly, why. We were doing so well. What was the catalyst of this sudden change? What I'm asking is for full disclosure. If, as Jefferson said, "Information is the currency of democracy," I am asking for information. What led to the decision to abandon the steady course to reopening and precipitate decision to fully reopen? This is a public issue. The public has a right to know. I am particularly perplexed in that the Health Department and the Board of Health have been exemplary in dealing with this crisis. What changed? This is another letter from Dr. John Ray, 915 West Galena Street, Butte, Montana. Recently, all restrictions such as mandatory mask wearing were removed in Butte. After a long and steady fight against COVID-19, which was showing success, I fear we have presumptuous in our actions. The disease is not defeated. The disease shows our great propensity to remain infecting and ruining the lives of fellow citizens. We have seen this in many parts of the country, as well as in foreign countries, how this disease is resilient. I urge us to stay the course until the disease is defeated. I fear we quit before victory. Why was this done? What was the science behind it? Was it purely a political decision? We have had too many public health decisions made in the last year that has skewed science in favor of politics, in the bad meaning of the term "political." Did political pressure outside of Butte occasion this decision? All sorts of rumors are circulating. I would, as a citizen, like to know. This message is in large part simply a request for information as to what happened. Can the public feel that this decision makes us safe? After all, the public's safety and health is the highest law, as Cesero said. Axioms. Number one, we have an ethical duty to be concerned about the fellow citizens and the public good. Number two, this concern must be expressed not only in word, but most importantly, in deed. It is not sufficient to simply say, "I am concerned about my fellow citizens." Number three, a major manifestation of this concern for the public good would be to act so as to protect the health and welfare of the community. Number four, we have government to promote the general welfare and the common good. My concern is, in light of the above, Butte may well have been premature in removing the public health restrictions that we in place and removing virtually all restrictions. I will repeat that I have tremendous amount of appreciation for all the good work that the Health Department, the Board of Health, and the local government has done to keep us safe. General argument, insofar as one is able, one should act personally to protect and promote the health of fellow citizens. Because during a pandemic, individual action is necessary but inefficient to protect the public, one should support and practice public measures to promote and protect fellow citizens. One should oppose public measures that endanger the life and health of one's neighbor and pose a significant risk to that health and to the public health. The lack of mandatory health protection requirements such as mask wearing is a threat to public health. The lack of these protections is a threat to the health of others. We cannot rely on personal responsibility alone. Certainly, personal responsibility is needed, but that is not sufficient. Some people are personally irresponsible. Their irresponsibility should not harm innocent people. Citizens must have some expectation that government will protect them from the antisocial actions of others. That is a major reason we have government. If we could rely entirely on personal responsibility, we would not need law or government, nor Yankar's argument would prevail. Saying that this is a personal choice does not meet the requirements of a just action. In this case, nor does it make an action that harms others just. Simply because an act was chosen does not make it right. I may choose to do evil out of ignorance or perverse will. The fact that I choose to do it does not make it right. A thief may choose to steal money from me, but that fact that he or she chose it does not make it right. My neighbor can be harmed by my choice, and when my choice and the resultant action can endanger my neighbor, when my private action injures another, government should step in to regulate this behavior. This is not the function of a non-government entity such as business because only government can make and enforce laws and rules binding upon all. The market is inefficient in promoting public health. Specific argument. Let us say that someone has had the second vaccine three weeks ago. Therefore, they should be accrue their full protective benefit to themselves. Even so, there are three disturbing possibilities that are realistic. Number one, the person could be asymptomatic infected or presymptomatic infected and not know it, and consequently infect others who are not protected. Number two, a non-vaccinated person can still get infected by another person not showing symptoms or being presymptomatic and infect others who are not protected. Given that the fact that a large number of individuals are not fully vaccinated makes this likely. Number three, also variants occur frequently which can accelerate spread and compromise vaccine effectiveness, and we do not know how long protection lasts from vaccines. When mask wearing ceases to be compulsory, compliance drops about 20 to 30 percent according to peer-reviewed studies. That is at all. Social and behavioral consequences of mask policies during COVID-19 pandemic, Proceedings of the National Academy of Science, August 20, 2020. I strongly recommend this peer-reviewed article. Also, the states and local government can compel compliance to promote the general welfare. Businesses can't. Ordnances of state and local and federal government can create a feeling of hypocrisy of compliance. Government can ensure that all are responsible for promoting the general welfare. The private sector cannot do that. That is why we have the promotion and protection of public health as a major government function. Therefore, I argue that masks and other safety precautions should be mandatory. We should return to the status quo before all restrictions were removed. Also, the public has a right to know what preceded this decision to remove restrictions. All sorts of rumors are circulating. Secrecy breeds suspicion. I have been asked by numerous individuals, "Do you think this was politics? Was there any science to back this up?" The following are references to peer-reviewed journal articles that support the arguments that I have made in this paper. References. Number one, World Health Organization Advice on the Use of Masks in the Context of COVID-19, interim guidance, 5 June 2020, R E P W H O/2019-N-CO-B/IPC masks/2020.4, World Health Organization, 2020. Number two, B F Meyer, D Brockman, Effective Containment Explains Sub exponential Growth in Recent Confirmed COVID-19 Cases in China, Science 368, 742-746, 2020. Number three, N H L, Hearing at All, Respiratory Virus is Shedding in Exhaled Breath and Efficiency of Face Mask, N A T M E D, 26646-680, 2020. Number four, S E Eckamberry, At All, To Mask or Not to Mask, Modeling the Potential for Face Masks Used by the General Public to Curtail the COVID-19 Pandemic, Infect D I S Model 5, 293-308, 2020. Number five, A Prather, C C Wang, W T Schooly, Reducing the Transmission of SARS-CoV-2, Science 368, 1422-1424, 2020. Number six, C R Sustain the Measuring of Masks, J B E H A V E C O N P O L 4, 5 through 8, 2020. Number seven, C Bedich, How Behavioral Science Data Helps Medicate the COVID-19 Crisis, National N A T H U M B E H A V 4, 438, 2020. Number eight, C Bedich, At All, Data of Social and Behavioral Consequences of Mask Policies During the COVID-19 Pandemic, Open Science Framework, and its website is HTTPS:OSF.IO/DVBRN/4, June 2020. Number nine, C Bedich, L H Wheeler, K Haberstet, Monitoring Behavior Insights Related to COVID-19, Lancet 395, 1255-1256, 2020. Number 10, S Ping, At All, Rational Use of Face Masks in the COVID-19 Pandemic, Lancet RESPIR MED 8, 434-436, 2020. Number 11, L Corn, R Born, N W Meyer, C Bedich, Vaccination as a Social Contract, P R O C N A T L A C A D S I I U S A, 117, 14890 through 14899, 2020. Number 12, N Daniels, Justice Health and Healthcare, A M J B O 1, 216, 213, N Eisenberg, P A Miller, The Relation of Empathy to Pro-social and Related Behaviors, P Y S P Y P S Y C O C H O L B U L 1 through 119, 1987. And we have a letter here from Karen Sullivan, our Director of Health Services Department. She says, in response to Dr. Ray, she says, "Dr. Ray, I'm sending you the link to the Board of Health rule that details what would happen, restrictions rescinded, if our primary metrics below were met." Number one, cases per 100,000 population positivity rate. These two metrics were met for the required sustained amount of time effective March 23rd." And then she lists the website as to where she found this. It's HTTPS:WWW.Silverbow.MT.us backslash Document Center, backslash View, backslash 20272, backslash COVID-19, Board of Health Rule, February 4, 2021. "The Board of Health and County officials are very well aware of the HB 6332 and its proposed recommendations via amendment. We believe that that amendment and those recommendations will be found to be unconstitutional and illegal." Thank you, Karen Sullivan. And we have one final letter from Dr. John Ray, 915 West Galena, Butte, Montana, in response to Karen Sullivan's. "Thank you for your prompt response. As I have said repeatedly, Butte can be proud of the Health Department and the Board of Health, who, in the face of unbelievable pressure, have performed in exemplary fashion. Notwithstanding the above, my question still stands. When there is a presumptuous called news conference to suddenly announce a major shift of public policy with, it seems, little public knowledge or affording the public little opportunity to weigh in on this specific policy change, to me, alarms will go off." Did it go off? "When there is an abrupt change, usually an abrupt event happen. A lot of people were surprised by the repudiation of the change. We knew and hoped it was coming in the future when we were more along with vaccinations, etc. The lifting of the restrictions was not an automatic event, but as I recall reading, was occasioned by a polling of the Board of Health. I am simply asking for full disclosure of what precipitated the event, what opportunities for public notification and comment were provided, and the full justification for it. I have already been told of conflict in local businesses, either because they continue to require masks or they no longer continue to require masks. My regulation was that the Board of Health had stated that changes would come more gradually. I intended to check the record to see if my regulation was correct. It seems that wearing masks, which is so non-intrusive and easy, particularly compared to getting the disease, is an acceptable inconvenience in order to protect public health. We still have a lot of people to vaccinate. We don't know how long protection..." We don't know how long protection lasts beyond three months. We don't know the effect of all the variants that are emerging on vaccination protection. We don't know if the variant will develop that is imperious to the vaccine. We don't know whether vaccines prevent transmission to others not vaccinated. There are many unknowns. In such a situation, prudence is warranted, caution is warranted. Moving conservatively and slowly in relaxing restrictions is warranted. What was the old adage? An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Wearing masks is less than an ounce of protection. I, it is easy, but it is most effective measure individuals can take to combat COVID-19. So again, I ask, what happened? What sped up the timetable? I ask, I also want to ask if the metrics that you cite change and become worse, will restrictions automatically be reimposed? As I have mentioned, every reputable public health authority says, keep restrictions, particularly mask wearing, in place. It is too soon to change. I think we should heed them. So again, my interrogative still stands with, I believe, good justification. Finally, I want to reiterate my respect for you, the Health Department, and the Board of Health. Please take my comments in proper spirit. A citizen request for information, Dr. John Ray.
Thank you. We'll move on to calendar and other events. Please take note of the calendar. And then I think we have an announcement from Commissioner Reardon.
Thank you, fellow Commissioners and Mr. Gallagher. I don't know if you've seen the email. I was approached by Lynette Hogard for a walkthrough of the animal shelter, and we've been working on this probably for a couple, two or three weeks, on Friday at noon. In questioning her and conversing with her, I asked her if this was like a fundraiser deal or, and she said she'd just like to go through the presentation and all that. And her, I, plan, I guess, is to secure extra budget money from the neck leasing to, to secure, to do some work down there and all that stuff. So she's a real aggressive gal and does a great job down there. And her and Ed have basically, Eddie Randall have turned that place around pretty good, but it just needs some help. And I really don't know what she has in mind. There's a couple people, or a couple Commissioners that have already said they'd be there. I realize that Friday at noon is, you know, with the working folk and all that stuff, so I just thought I'd put it out there. If you can't make it, we'll just keep you posted on what's going on, and then we'll go from there. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reardon. Well, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
So moved, second. Thumbs up. We're out of here.